Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and being broadcast live on the town's website, pennfield.org, also on the town's government access channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know it is free. If you would like to address the board on any public matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for people that are here in person on each matter after the board finishes its questions of the applicant. And certainly anybody that is attending virtually can also submit comments or ask questions in two manners. The first is to phone 340-8771, and the second is to submit a comment electronically, also using pennfield.org. Yeah, I did say, is it being transcribed, too? Are we still doing that, transcribing the minutes later on?
There will be minutes, but I don't believe that the...
The meeting was transcribed?
Requested, we will.
There we go. If requested, somebody really wants a transcript of this, we'll do it, apparently. I don't know what made me think of that, but in any event. So we'll start today with our work session, and then we will go right into our public hearings for tonight's applications. I think we have three of them, so we should move along fairly quickly today. We like to point out every meeting that we think the town does a really good job of alerting citizens about the application so that citizens are fully informed of their right to come in or make comments electronically. We appreciate when people take the time to do that because it allows us to do our job better. The town does this by sending postcards to property owners that are within a certain distance of the subject property, by having the applicant post a sign on the property, by posting the agenda on the website and other manners as well. And again, I think we all agree that it works well for us. So having said that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Let's go right to the agenda and take up the tabled matter. I know that we had tabled it for a couple reasons. One was to see if the applicant can make another effort to take engineering steps to reduce the variance requested, and the applicant did do that. We also tabled it to get, ask the planning board, which is also considering this project for its view on the application. And we did get a memo from the planning board, and Andy, you gave it to the applicant. I'm sure you've had time to review that. In essence, the planning board, by a split vote, if I could, if I read the memo correctly, was not supportive of this application. That doesn't stop the applicant from proceeding with the planning board. They may have to change a few things. That's the planning board's purview, and of course, what they are said in the memo is just simply a recommendation to this board, and we did ask for it, and we appreciate it. So thank you, planning board, for that. So I don't know if we've done seeker on this one. Does anybody? We did not.
No.
Okay.
So I would move to declare it a type-two action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right. Matt's made a motion under seeker, type-two action. Andres, second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is unanimous? Any more discussion, or?
I'd like to hear what other people think. I still have concerns, and I think, as I'm going down the list of what needs to be shown to get the area variance, I think that there's almost a negative in each one that you look at. Obviously, three is the biggest one, which is whether it's substantial, and it's 57% larger than is required by code, which is a very substantial variance. The other thing I come back to is the change of the neighborhood, and the reality is, the issue is, we don't know what the change of the neighborhood is, because they're going to be seeking a subdivision, and there's going to be somewhere between 14 and 15 houses. At some point, they're going to be installed in there. So there is going to be a change in the neighborhood, and it's what that change looks like that we don't know at this point. The benefits to the applicant can be achieved by not seeking a variance. They just need 14 subplots instead of 15. And I realize that there's a loss of value to the homeowner, but it comes back to, is it self-created? And it is. And I know that that's not in and of itself something that can deny an application for a variance, but this is, it's a very substantial, a very substantial variance, and it is self-created, and it can be obtained by not seeking a variance. I would like to hear from, if anybody wants to talk me out of this, then I'm willing to listen, but right now, I'm leaning towards making a motion to deny it.
I had a question that kind of occurred to me. So when this gets subdivided, it's going to be sold as one piece to a developer first, right?
I think that that's probably going to be up to the planning board.
Or the owner.
Or the owner.
Okay.
But that's a common practice.
Okay.
That's a common practice, yeah.
I think I'll come back and echo what you were saying, Matt, is in terms of, I think at last meeting, I spoke to the point of, if we're proposing there's going to be 14 other lots here, or 15 other lots, and we're allowing a larger building, you know, storage accessory structure this large, what's to say that that's okay now to allow it for the next one, and the next one, and the next one, at such close proximity? Because usually what happens is, and we've seen it, we've allowed something, and then at some point, there's a unique situation where someone doesn't quite take that exception. We go, oh, but you guys did this last time, and they'll come back and say, this application this time, this date, because we've allowed it. Now here, we're saying, well, it would be okay for this one, but then none of the others? So, you know, I can't make that argument, saying that that would hold any value, saying that, no, not for you, but yes, for just this one.
Right.
Yeah, I would echo what you said, too, and there's, to some extent, it's speculative, whether you're going to get 14 and 15. That's not so much speculative, but the, what I remember hearing was, it would be much more salable at 15 than it would at 14. But I mean, who's to say that that's the case?
Right.
But I think it would be very salable anyway, just given the climate right now. I think people are paying premium dollar, no matter what. Right, right.
Yeah, the only comment that I would add is, to me, the applicant and applicant's representative were very candid about the reason for doing this. It's a financial request. That goes right to your point, Matt, about being able to proceed in the absence of a variance. So, okay. Going to make a motion?
So I would, for all of the reasons I stated, I would make a motion to deny this application.
Okay.
Second it.
All right. Mike, second it. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. Well, sorry it didn't go your way, but I will tell you, we do appreciate the candor and the effort that you made to reduce the variance, and good luck with the planning board. Okay. All right. We can proceed right to the public hearings, then, if everybody's okay. Go right to the first one.
Do minutes from last one?
Dan?
Well, I was going to save those for the end, but no, let's do them now, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve them with the correct date on them.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving right along. First application, please, there, Andy.
Gerald Testa, 700 Berg Road, Ontario, New York, 14519. Requests approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.6-C1E of the code to allow the operation of a construction business and residential use and area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow, in addition, with less side and rear setback than required, under section 250-5.6-D3 of the code, with less buffer than required, under section 250-7.2-A of the code, at 1343 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Gerald and Peggy Testa and is zoned limited business, SBL number 095.03-1-32.2. This is application number 21Z-0050.
If you could just, and this applies to all the applicants, and I just, go ahead and have a seat, and give us your name and address, and then the board will, having reviewed the written applications, which are all very thorough, the board will lead you through the applications, ask any questions, and certainly after that, if you want to add anything, or any time need to add anything, feel free to do that, so.
Gerald Testa, 700 Berg Road, Ontario, New York.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So this, let's take the conditional use portion first. You're proposing to continue the use as both a business and residential?
Yes.
What's the residential? One apartment?
No, there's a double in the front that was always existing. One time before the owner that I purchased it from, it was Caldwell &amp; Cook Builders, and then the person that I bought it from had a saddle place in the back. Right now, those are currently both residential, and the garage in the back is where I have my shop.
Okay.
So at this point, I am, I don't have any place to put anything, and I got stuff outside, and it's not weathering well, for one thing, and in this environment, at the cost of lumber, leaving stuff outside is an invitation for a bad thing. I have to put verdis on my jobs just to keep the wood from not disappearing.
So the use is currently in existence for the double?
Oh, yeah.
And you're not proposing any changes to that?
No, no. I purchased the building, the same tenant was there. I kind of inherited the lease from him, so.
So describe, you're going to use this in a construction business that you operate?
I'm a general contractor.
Okay.
We don't have a ton of equipment. I do mostly interior rental.
Okay.
I do a lot of public work. I've worked for you guys before in the past, but I don't have any room for anything anymore. I live in one garage there, and it's pretty full, even for small stuff, like baker scaffolds and lumber that's left from a job. I basically just need more storage.
What were you doing before you acquired the property with your business?
Before I acquired the property, I owned a construction company with my brother, and we were based out of Gates.
Okay.
When I got bought out of that, I started another company. I purchased this building.
So how many, are there any other employees that are going to be there for the business?
I have a girl in the office and my partner, who's an estimator. Our employees never go to the office, they're, they just go to the jobs. I have a small outfit. I have two carpenters. The rest of it's all subcontractor work.
And customers wouldn't typically go there either, would they?
No. We don't do residential. We don't need a showroom.
How much, so you have, what, three, four employees there, or four people there for a business? Parking, I'm talking about, basically?
Usually three.
Three. Okay.
And actually, I run most of the work, so there's usually two cars there.
And as well as the tenants, but?
The tenants, yeah, that's a separate.
Separate parking.
They park in the front. There's a separate, they've been parking in the same spot before I even purchased the building. It's paved up front.
And parking's not an issue there. It seems to be more than enough room.
Yeah, no.
Okay. You have an existing sign there? Is there going to be any change to that?
No.
It's a small sign in the front, I believe.
Small sign in the front.
Yeah. Any change to exterior lighting?
No. I left the same lights. He had motion sensors. I just left them there. They work.
All right. Hours of operation? Daytime, mostly?
Four o'clock, we're done.
Okay.
Commercial construction, you know, you don't work till six or seven at night.
And, but you will have equipment being driven in and out of there?
No. The equipment that I have, like baker scaffolds and stuff like that, I don't, I don't own any site equipment.
All right. So it's mostly scaffolding and stuff like that?
Yeah, and leaving it outside, not doing it any favors. So that's why I wanted to put the addition up for storage. I did speak to the guy next door to me. It's the only residential property anywhere around, because Oak Construction bought the old garden place, and he has no problem with it. It's nowhere near his house. It's in the back, behind the garage, so he didn't seem to have an issue with it at all. He said, I don't, you know.
Yeah, that's the old Harris seed place you're talking about?
Yeah, Oak Construction bought it. I have no idea what their intentions. They're good people. They cleaned it up really nice. They did a real big cleanup over there. It looks good.
What about the residence to the north of your spot? I mean, that's where this, we're sort of getting into the, into the structure.
The guy to the north, I went and spoke to. He has a split level there. He's got a couple acres or an acre or so. I did speak to him. I told him what was going on. I invited him here if he wanted to come. He said, I don't have any problem with it. Go ahead. He put the fence up, I guess, so he put a fence up between our, before I bought the place.
Yeah, it's a board fence.
Yeah, but he's cool. He's a nice guy.
So what, tell me what you have as far as storage existing?
Right now, I only have a one-car garage.
Okay. The rest of it's office?
So it's like, in office, in the front, yeah.
So most of it's office?
Most of it's office. So the one-car garage, I mean, you know, it's, you don't take a lot. You could put a few step ladders and a scaffold in there, and you're done. You know, our interior, the tools that, my guys are mostly carpenters. We do mostly interior rental work, miter saws, table saws. You can't leave that stuff out.
How did you determine the size that you needed?
That's basically what I need, because the building's 30 feet long, 30 feet deep, the existing garage. So I wanted to go two feet in the front so it looked better, 32 feet, and then just 20 feet over would still leave me a lot of, quite a bit before I got to my lot line. So that's what I went by.
And from, from the map that you gave us, the back is going to be no close?
Even with the existing building.
Right, and along the same line, too, right?
Correct.
And looking at it, it's probably actually a little bit further than 11 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Slight angle.
Little.
11 foot's measured from the east corner of the rear of the garage.
Right.
And how is, what's the exterior going to look like in relation to the, what's there now?
Same color, same vertical siding, except I'm going to do metal siding, but it's going to look exactly the same. Black roof, gray body.
Same, and roof?
I think I'm going to do a metal roof, though. It's just about longevity.
And what about height in relation to what's there now?
I only went a foot higher because I want to be able to flash it correctly. You know, I don't want it so tight to the roof that, or try to tie it, you can never tie them in perfect. So I just went enough, high enough so that I could flash it to the existing gable.
One of the things we're required to look at is, for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, is that it promotes greater compliance with our code. Have you thought about that? Can you address that?
I don't know what I could do to do that. What do you mean?
Well, I mean, the fact that it's in existence is why you're allowed to keep it, even though it doesn't comply with current. But when you make something bigger, you're supposed to show some type of benefit.
Well, the benefit would be that everything would be inside, and the property's going to be a lot neater and cleaner. Right now, I have stuff stored next to the building, and quite frankly, in the winter, that's a real, not only is it hard to get at, it looks terrible.
There's some type of trailer there, too, isn't there?
Yes.
Is that going inside?
Yes.
Okay.
That's another thing. That's an aluminum trailer. We use it for anything, you know, if we got big stuff that we have to bring back, scaffolds or ladders.
And this together will look like two separate garage doors?
There will be a separate garage door, yes. They'll be next to each other, with a man door between them.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Good. And before we open it up to any other questions, I'll remind the public, call 340-8771 with any comments or questions, or submit them electronically at pennfield.org. Right now, I don't see any, in either mode, any other questions from the board?
No.
That was really thorough.
Yeah, it was thorough. Thank you, Mike. I would only add that your question about bringing it more into conformance in your answer, in the years I've been on this board, cleaning the place up, so to speak, is something that we've used to justify expansion of, and I know that you'll do it.
Oh, yeah.
And that will be a vast improvement for that whole area. I think, actually, people are probably looking forward to it.
Honestly, leaving that trailer out there?
Right.
That's a little scary.
Yeah.
If you got a hitch.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, well, don't invite anybody.
Sorry, brought it up.
Yeah.
Broadcast breaches millions of people.
That doesn't even count the people that DVR. Okay. All right. Again, no comments in on the website or on the phone, so let's go ahead and move to the consideration.
Uh, seeker, I would move that this is a type-two action, requiring no further review under seeker.
Second.
All right. You get that? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, seeker?
Aye.
Aye. And now the merits?
On the merits, on the conditional use permit, I'm going to move to approve it. It sounds like it's actually going to be less of an intense operation than when it was there, which was, to some extent, a retail store. Before that, this board approved a landscaping business, which is sort of similar, maybe, again, a little more intense, because there's probably more coming and going there. So I think it's in harmony with the intent of the zoning law and the district which it's in. It's right next to another commercial place on one side, and pretty much, the things that we have to look at, means of ingress and egress, noise, signage, seems to be all in compliance, so I would move to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. A motion to approve by Mike, second by Andres. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, unanimous? Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me get to the variances.
Oh, geez, okay. Geez, Mike.
That was the...
Sit back down, sir.
Don't go anywhere yet.
Is this one of those detail-oriented things, Dan?
Yeah. I'm going to also move to approve that. The three variances, both buffering side and rear, it's going to, it's going to increase the amount of structure that's, that's not in compliance, but it's not going any further than what's already there, as far as closeness to the boundary line. It's pretty well buffered to the rear, and actually, most of where this is going to be, I mean, the houses sits in front of it, more towards the road. I just think that it fits in well there, and I think it'll help his operation and help clean up the site, so for those reasons, I would move to approve.
Second.
All right. A motion on the second portion of the application to approve, and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck.
Now, really? Now, really?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Next one?
I think our applicant just left.
Looks like the applicant left. Probably had to pick up a pizza.
Talk slow.
Or deliver one.
Wow.
Silvio Fantuzzo, 146 Tuscan Lane, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a swimming pool with less setback than required, under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code, at 146 Tuscan Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by Silvestro N. Fantuzzo and Angela B. Petropalo and is zoned RR-1, SBL number 094.02-2-52. This is application number 21Z-0051.
And again, if you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then Andres will have some questions for you.
I'm Silvio Fantuzzo. My address is 146 Tuscan Lane, and I'm looking to get a variance for my pool.
Perfect. Thank you. You had a lot of information in the application, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Looking at some of the unique things about your lot, what about your lot is different than, let's say, your neighbor's lot or things like that?
Well, what's different about my lot is I'm a corner lot, so basically, my side is considered the same as my front, so it kind of doesn't leave me much room for, because I need the 35-foot variance for that, so I don't have the normal regulations that someone else would have with a normal lot that wasn't on a corner.
Sure. So the, since your front yard and your side yard are both considered the setbacks the same as the front yard, so typically, if you had a 10-foot, you're held to a higher standard for that, for that side lot.
Exactly.
And then, why do you need the variance to put the pool where it sits? Is there a better place where you could put the pool? Is there an alternative area in the yard?
So off the back of the house, we have that existing patio that is there, so for it to fit with the 10-foot that we would need there, it just, it would never work there, so to put it there, it'd be crowded, so the only way to really go was to that right side, and if we get that variance, it would be able to fit. We moved it off the back line, so we wouldn't need a variance for that, but if we're allowed to get it, it's kind of really the only spot that that size pool is going to fit on that lot.
Okay. So since the backyard, the way it's laid out with the, you know, concrete patio that you have there, the, that's really the only placement for that, you know, configuration of a pool?
Yes, for that size pool configuration, that shape is really the only spot that we're going to be able to get it on that lot.
And are you currently working with a pool contractor to help you lay out the best location for that?
Yes, he's been there numerous times, and we kind of went over it a bunch of times to figure it out, and we both agreed that that is going to be like the only spot that really works to get it.
Okay. If the pool was 15 feet farther into your property from the outside, walking by, what would it, would it look any different to somebody walking by?
If it was 15 feet?
Closer to the inside, so let's say I'm walking down the side of the road, and I look over towards where the pool's going to be, is it going to look any different to me?
Um, no, I mean, I don't, you can't even see in the backyard, so.
Because you have a?
We have, we have a six-foot fence on the side of the house. It's wrapped around the whole house, so you can't even see, and then there's all those trees there, so you can't even see back there, and obviously, we would do the fence, so there's no...
So since the buffering is already obscuring, so you have a fence outside of that area that you're looking to put it in?
Oh, yeah. The fence is on the outside of that area, and there's a fence that's not on that, whatever picture you have right there, but there's a fence in the front of the house outside.
The front yard as well.
So you can't see anything back there.
Okay. In terms of, you know, and since, so the corner lot's really setting you up for, I don't want to say failure, but you have to have a variance, really, to put a pool anywhere on that side area, because...
Yeah, being a corner lot, there's no other way for me to get a pool on that piece of property there. Unfortunately, the side lot is the, it's my biggest piece of land that I have there, Unfortunately, the side lot is my biggest piece of land that I have there, and I know when they originally built the house, I think they set it that way to see it better from the road, whatever they did, but that's really my only spot to put it.
Okay, and so any issues that you could see forthcoming from having a pool there in terms of drainage or things for your neighbor? Is your pool person going to be taking care of the grade of the yard to affect any kind of drainage?
Yeah, they're going to be taking care of the grade and all that, and that was another factor we put in the face because the way that that is graded as it goes towards the back of the house, so also being over there is not going to affect the grade of where all the water is going to be going.
Okay. That's all I've got.
All right, let me just remind the public they can call with comments, 340-8771. In fact, we do have one caller and/or they can submit electronic applications through the website pennfield.org. I would just point out that the original application also called, if I'm not mistaken, for a variance to the north, but you moved the pool south, so you didn't need a variance to the north.
So I didn't want to, so that's why we moved it up.
Which is where, you know, would be in the direction of a neighbor, so that was good, that was a positive move. Before we go to Mr. Olbeck, who is on the phone, any other board questions?
No.
Okay, then Jason Olbeck is on the phone and he describes his question slash comment as make a positive comment, so. Mr. Olbeck, can you hear me? I don't have to, do I have to click on anything?
I don't think so.
It's me.
All right. What do you think about the choice for the new host of Jeopardy, Andy? No comment, huh?
Didn't know they found one yet.
They're split, you know, they're having two people do it through the rest of the night.
Who's doing it?
Who is it?
Who'd they find?
I don't know. It's an actress that was in that.
Myam.
She's pretty funny, she's pretty, I didn't see any, I don't, I'm not old enough to watch Jeopardy.
We've been kind of watching.
But now Andy, on the other hand, what are you saying here? That's the most random question ever.
Well, you know, you kill time on Jeopardy when you hear the music playing, that's what made me think of it. Maybe Mr. Olbeck can try submitting a comment on the website. Mr. Olbeck, are you there for your comment? All right, fool me twice.
Maybe his comment was that it's positive.
Well, he typed in it, make a positive comment, so is this your neighbor?
This is my neighbor, he's across the way.
Did you talk with him about this?
Yeah, yeah.
So while we're waiting, I mean, he can speak up. Mr. Olbeck?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, so feel free to comment on the application.
It's a technology miracle. So my name's Jason Olbeck. I am the neighbor to the east of the property in question, so the pool will be going in between our two properties, and I just wanted to call to voice my approval of the request and I hope that it gets, the variance is approved. You guys pretty much touched on all the important parts, but the biggest one is there's already a six-foot privacy fence all the way around this part of the property, so no matter what goes there, pool or something else, it's not going to change the look from the road. So anyway, I just wanted to voice my approval for the variance and I don't know if anyone has any questions for me.
Anybody have questions? No, we're all set, thank you very much for taking the time to do this.
Yep, and we're excited if it gets approved, so I hope it works out, thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds like you'll be having some pool parties.
As I say, it sounds like you owe somebody a pool, right?
You know somebody that can bring pizza?
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment, just looking from the overheads there, although being a corner lot, you have more restrictive setback requirements, that's the only place you can put a pool in an immediate row, because the rest of it, there's certainly not enough room on the side, even at 10 feet.
Certainly without variances, yeah.
Or the rear, yeah.
Yeah, there's nowhere else really, so.
It's physically possible, so.
Okay, so then let's proceed with.
Okay, let's see, this is a type-two action requiring no further review under seeker.
Second.
Okay, Andres and Mike with the motion and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the merits?
And the merits. I am going to move that we approve this variance for 19.5 feet from the minimum setback requirement of 35. As the applicant described and I think we heard here, there's really no undesirable change though will be found. You won't see any difference from the road. There's the picket fence along the front and the side, there's a row of trees across the back, so as we said, if it was closer to the house and/or closer to the fence, you wouldn't see the difference anywhere, so in terms of the negative impact, would be very minimal. He's working with the pool contractor to make sure any kind of environmental impacts from drainage will be mitigated if there are any issues, and in terms of the placement of lots, there's really no other feasible place, and really anywhere else he put it on that lot on that side would probably require a variance no matter what.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for all the reasons stated and a second, further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, good luck, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Third applicant, virtual?
Yes.
Yes. Now, that's good since there's nobody else in the room.
Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, P.O. Box 597, Ontario, New York, 14519. On behalf of Chipotle Mexican Grill, request approval for a special use permit for signage under section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow three building-mounted signs, whereas a maximum of one building-mounted sign is allowed under section 250-10.13-C of the code at 1838 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Lord Stanley New York LLC and is owned General Business, SBL number 093.15-1-58. This is application number 21Z-0053.
Okay, if you could please give us your name and address and then the board will have some questions for you about the application.
Good evening, Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, 530 Route 104, Ontario, New York.
Okay, thank you. So actually a question for the applicant, but also Andy as well, because we had a lot of notes here. The only request before the board is for three signs for three building-mounted signs.
Yes, we actually issued a permit for one building-mounted sign, which complies with code.
Sure.
They're asking for approval to put two additional building-mounted signs.
And there's freestanding as well?
There's a freestanding sign.
That's a little bit larger than code, but that was allowed anyway for whatever, because of the history of the property, is that?
Yep, the board approved that sign, the size and location for the previous use, and they just, they put up a replacement sign of the same size in that area.
Okay, everybody get that? I mean, that was pretty clear in the memo, we appreciate that. Okay, so the new restaurant is in an area that's a little bit unique in the sense that it is, on both sides of it are two busy roads, I guess I'd say, so I understand the need for appropriate signage. One thing that's sticking in my mind and honestly I need to hear some pretty significant justification for it is, why do you need a total of three building-mounted, especially when M&amp;T had, I believe, a freestanding sign and two building-mounted? So feel free to talk about anything you like that's germane to the application, but that's really my main question here.
Okay, obviously, as you stated, the property is unique, it's, you have entrances for both Creek Street and Empire Boulevard. The reasoning, obviously those two signs are to attract drive-through or drive-in customers. The third, the south elevation faces the parking lot, and that's the main entrance to the store. So without that, it kind of leaves that elevation kind of naked, and it really needs to be identified so that people are aware that that's the entrance. There are similar variances that have been approved. There's three building-mounted signs at the Baytown Wine and Liquor, right around the corner, very similar situation. They have three elevations and each one has a substantially large sign on each location.
Okay, do we have any depictions that show the building and the freestanding sign?
That was shown, actually on that view that you were just at prior, it does show the, yes, right there.
Okay, so to me, any person in a car or on a bike or walking that can see the sign that you're proposing about the entrance can also see that freestanding sign. So I guess I'd ask you, isn't there another way that you can mark the entrance of that other than a third building-mounted sign? I mean, can you put decals on the door, on the inside of the door?
This is Dan Radman with Chipotle. I'm representing the tenant or the client in this case.
Sure.
We do, we have Chipotle medallion emblems, decals that go on each of our doors, ingress and egress, kind of subdued, not very large or colorful, it's just a white decal, but this site, I mean, it's a unique site. We're kind of on this peninsula between Empire Boulevard and Creek Street. As similar to the previous tenant, we would like to obviously have signage facing each of those roadways, but we're also, similar to the previous tenant, we've got a drive-through condition. They had their tellers on the north side as you would come around the driveways. In our case, you come around the building and facing Empire Boulevard, that's where our pickup window is going to be, and it's just a byproduct of the way our building and our layout is designed internally to respond to that flow of cars around the building. Our front of our building, where we have our patio, where we have our front entrance door, where we have the ADA parking, all of that faces south, and that's the one elevation that would not have a sign, so, you know, it's purely an informational and aesthetic solution for that elevation to make it unified with the rest of the building and have some signage on there. We could, and if we have a different sign type than what's shown, we also do a medallion sign that's slightly smaller, a round medallion sign. We could do that off, right above the door at the corner if that would help satisfy the concern.
Well, it may, I guess I'm not quite, I'm not quite understanding, well, I don't know what it would look like unless you have one in your submission, but maybe pull the, let's make sure we know exactly where he's proposing it, the medallion one.
What I'm proposing is the medallion one, excuse me, on the, what is the south elevation or our front elevation?
Right.
I don't know if you have the deck of, for the variance, in that deck of drawings from Broadway National, there's page number four, which shows the south elevation, so instead of having the rectangular sign on that elevation centered on that facade, we could do this medallion sign, and we make them in various diameters, you know, two to, two and a half to five feet diameter. In our case, I don't, you know, something like a three or four-foot diameter would be, probably a four-foot diameter would work, and we would place that over the doors, the entrance doors on the right side, so it would kind of anchor and locate the main entrance on that facade.
Okay, I think that's, you're moving in the right direction. All right, I'll, anybody else have any questions? Do we have a depiction of that medallion sign anywhere that, I thought I saw something and?
I'm looking through the deck right now to see if there's anything in here.
Dan?
Yeah.
No, there's.
I just got his name.
Yeah, Dan, would you please give us your last name again?
Sure, it's Dan Radman, R-A-D-M-A-N. I'm the design manager with Chipotle for the store.
Okay, I'm seeing something on one drawing that looks like a pepper.
Yeah, no, that's our logo on the pepper. I wish I could, I can't share the screen right now, but we could.
We can let you share a screen if you'd like.
It's on my phone, so hang on one second. See if I can shoot this out on the phone.
So four-foot round versus? Yeah, what is it?
Yeah, I'd like to reserve, I'd like to reserve the right to just look at it in elevation with the correct dimensions and we would be happy to resubmit that south elevation for record, you know, with the correct sizing on that. Let me look real quick, so if I can pull this up.
All right, while you're trying to do that, I'll see if, does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I was just going to say, notice what I think are four good-sized windows on that elevation, I got a feeling that those aren't going to stay clear for very long, there's going to be.
Oh, no, they do.
Yeah.
We don't populate our windows with any signage or neon or anything like that.
I have a question. Is there any indication that M&amp;T, or the bank, I think it was an M&amp;T, had any issue driving traffic or people finding out where the entrance of the bank was or anything like that when, under the signs that existed when they had it?
I don't know that.
Yeah, and the building, the M&amp;T bank is totally gone, it was removed, and this is a new footprint altogether, and I don't think the overhead view of the existing bank really gives the patio area justice. There is a site plan on page one of the packet, the brand book that was supplied, and it does have a seating area out there and some green space and so on.
Yeah, I live right around the corner, my dentist is right there, my coffee spot, Tim Horn's I go to, and I used to bank at M&amp;T, so I'm really familiar with it and I, you know, it's a destination spot, so once people realize it's there, they'll know where they're going, I get that, and I also think that the patio and the tables out there will also serve to let people know. I'm okay with the other two signs because you're on two roads and I'm okay with the freestanding, I guess it doesn't really matter what I think about that since that's been approved, but I just, you know, I like, kind of like this idea of a smaller round sign there by the doors, because sure, okay, it's an entrance, and I'd like your commitment not to put anything in those windows, but unfortunately, we don't see anything. I'm willing to either table this or move ahead with your application in regard to an additional building-mounted sign, I'm not speaking for my fellow board members, and then have you come back next month if you want on the third one.
Dan, I just wanted to add, I think the resolution that approved the larger freestanding sign was based on the fact that there would be no additional signage on the building other than the two, so I think that's also a critical.
That's a good point.
That's often what we do, if you ask for additional sign, we say, okay, do you need the building-mounted sign anymore or the freestanding sign because you've got all sides covered already, and now there's no need to put a sign out by the road that stands up.
Okay.
Keep in mind that that freestanding sign is existing, it's the old M&amp;T sign, and it was allowed because of the cost of having to replace that with a new sign, that's why they utilized it to keep it there.
Right, and that's actually the, kind of the point that Mike just made by saying it's allowed there, but it was, a larger sign was permitted on the condition that there be only two building-mounted signs, so not that you necessarily inherited that requirement, but that is a fact, that when it was granted to be larger, there was also that requirement. So, does anybody have any more comments? Again, I'm, so I don't see any comments on the phone or electronically, and I don't want to short-change you at all, but my guess is that if we move forward with the entire application now, you're probably going to get one additional sign, so we can.
Well, could we, we're, if you guys have, I'm sure have driven by the site recently, but we are in full construction mode at this point.
Yeah.
And if you would grant us the one additional sign facing Creek Street at this point, in addition to the one that's allowed as of right, in addition to the pylon, we'll gladly come back next month with a modified south elevation showing you the round medallion sign, you know, to scale, proper views, et cetera, for your consideration as that third sign.
Yeah, and again, I was speaking on my own behalf when I did that, I mean, there are four other members here, so, but, okay, so I think I have your position clearly, I'm prepared to make a motion, and any other comments or questions?
Do they have to make a new application next month?
No, well, we can table that portion of it, can't we? And?
Not really, because we're.
It's a new sign, like it's a different sign.
Well, that's true, but it's, the advertisement to me is. Well, that's true, but it's, the advertisement, to me, is close enough, it's for an additional sign.
We should ask our attorney here, that doesn't, that doesn't have a sign indicating his name in front of him tonight.
Say it again? Yeah. I don't know, I didn't, let's see, how was this advertised?
To allow three building-mounted signs. So that portion of it wouldn't...
If you waited for the next meeting, how would that affect the construction? I mean, could, if the whole thing was tabled? And then, you know, then, I don't know what they...
Next meeting, next meeting would be next month?
Yes.
Yeah, what we're talking about now is if we just move ahead with the application as is current, and you get only one sign, you're entitled, I, well...
Actually, would the application be different enough to actually...
Right.
I don't really see that they've established the need for it.
Well, unless if you denied it without prejudice, that portion of it?
Yeah, well, so, all right, let's, let's move ahead like this, I'm going to make a motion, and we'll see where it goes. So, which is, where it goes, it goes. My, on the seeker, I'm going to make a motion to declare this an unlisted action and further to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second that one, that's a good one.
Okay, yeah, that's, you can support that one. All right. So any further discussion on Seeker? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and on the merits, I would make a motion to approve one additional sign, but I'd also make a motion to table that portion of the application, which is for the second sign. So I can make, you tell me what, what, that's, that's my motion, I don't know if it's properly stated or not, we can vote, and my guess, it's, it's probably not going to carry, and then somebody else can take, make a motion. Because then it...
Well, so it's like approved in part and tabled in part?
Yeah, but that would have to pass, and I'm not, I've never been less confident of a motion in 22 years. So let's, let's just do that, that's the motion that I'll make.
I'll second it.
Okay, he'll second it for the purpose of forcing a vote. All those in favor of my motion, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, four to one, I lose. So if somebody else wants to make a motion, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve one building-mounted sign, but not the second building-mounted sign.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Would you, can I just ask a clarification? Because we talked a little bit about whether or not that would be a denial without prejudice or not, so I don't know if there's, if there, I don't know how you want to characterize that, you don't have to say anything about that, but, you know, if you, if you wanted to let them come in with it next month?
I think it's too late for that.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's...
Well, the submission deadline is tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
It's with prejudice.
Well...
Well, they have a right to come in and ask us to consider whether it's sufficiently...
If it's sufficiently different, that's right.
I mean, that's up to them, yeah.
Where, where does, I mean, where does that leave us? Because, like I said, we're in construction, we were hoping to get some ruling on this tonight, if we're coming back next month...
Yeah, well, you're about to, let's, let's take a vote on this, and then I'll answer your question. So we have, Mike's motion is to approve only one additional sign.
Leaving two building-mounted signs, one freestanding.
One freestanding, okay. We got, I think that motion's pretty clear, is there a second?
Yes, I did.
All right, all in favor of Mike's motion?
Aye.
Well, so the location of the sign up to the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay, all right, did you, okay, all in favor, we had four ayes, I'm opposed to that. All right, so you, right now, that motion, you got approved for two building-mounted signs, you can put them wherever you like.
Okay.
Now, if you are still interested in the third sign, after hearing my colleagues speak tonight, you're, you can, you can ask us, you could submit another application, you have, you got to do it tomorrow, and, and this board's first question is whether the new application is substantially different from the one that was just denied, because we have a rule that once denied, you can't come back for a year unless the board answers that question in the affirmative. So I suggest you get on the phone tomorrow and talk with Andy, maybe make a case about how different this new sign and new location will be, but I don't, I don't want you, you heard people's comments, I don't want you to get any false hope or waste time and energy and money on that. That's up to you, gentlemen.
Well, we'd like to pursue it. I appreciate the approval on the two signs, and we will modify the application to address the single third sign that we would be coming back to you with, and I'll speak to whomever at Town Hall tomorrow to, to, I guess, clarify how substantially different it is.
Very good. Okay, well, thanks.
As far as, just to test my understanding, we have approval on the second sign, will you issue a permit for that, or, just thinking of fabrication lead times, it's going to take a few weeks to manufacture this sign, the one that just got approved.
We'll need to clarify where you want to put the sign on the building, and then, yeah, we can just process a sign permit for that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night, thank you, and I think that's it for applications. Took care of the table matter, so we will stand adjourned until our October meeting. Thank you all very much.
Night.
Good night.